Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular Select Board meeting. Today is January 14, 2019 at 7:00 PM. And we are in the Callahan Room of the Dalton Town Hall. And Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
If you could lead us in the place, please.
Please.
The Attorney. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a new Recording Secretary with us this evening. It's Nancy Rosenbaum, correct?
Yes.
Nancy, welcome.
Thank you.
And Nancy, would you do the roll call for us, please?
Present are Mark Stroud.
Here.
Oh, thank you.
You can use it.
Can you tell me who's present, please?
Okay, Mark Stroud.
President.
Robert Bishop.
President.
John Boyle.
Here.
At Hall.
President.
And John Bartels. And Ken Walto, our Town Manager.
Present.
Okay, we have minutes from December 11, 2018. Oh, you know what I said? I probably said 2018 for today's date, didn't I?
I said 19.
Did I say 19?
No.
I'm with it, okay. Thank you. Um, we have minutes from December 11, 2018 before a motion is made. Does anyone have anything they wish to add or change? I just have one thing, um, on page two. Very minor, but just to, uh, be more specific. It's under the, uh, yeah, the section of stationary factory parking issues. A third line down. In result, the fire doors were obstructed. And I just want to, I would say, fire department doors were obstructed. And I believe that's what was being talked about at that point in time.
One correction, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Three of five under considerations of the COA position. It's the, um, third line up from the bottom of the first section. It was just a typo. It says, it should be, uh, that this could even be in cooperation to the senior center tax work.
Okay.
Not cooperating.
Okay, anything else? May I have the motion, please?
Motion to accept the minutes from December 11, 2018 as correct.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose?
Abstentions?
I abstain.
One abstention, Mr. Stroud. Okay. Uh, now we have the public address to the board. And this is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company or institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or their designee. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? We'll start with you, Richard. Go ahead.
Hi, Richard Hall, 164 Green Ridge Drive. Okay. Um, can I be recognized for number 10? Already asking questions for it.
Number 10?
Yeah. Yeah, the other thing, and I know it can't be addressed at this point, is I know this Green Ridge Plaza, the pizza place is closed. So I wonder what was happening with, uh, um, the liquor license or whatever? Because I know you guys approved it at some stage. And as I said, it may be already taken care of. It may be something to bring up. And lastly, uh, the cable committee hasn't met for some time. I was just talking to John, and it sounds like Spectrum's decided not to talk to us again. So maybe.
Funny you should bring that up, but.
I gather that.
Seeing that we can't discuss it, I can't discuss it.
No, no.
But it is, it is the topic, yes.
It may be a good topic for a future agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. So Green Ridge Plaza, it's your concern of the liquor license and.
Well, because apparently it's.
Because it's closed. It is closed, yeah. The pizza place. Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Ruffler.
John Ruffler, Highway Superintendent. I'd just like to speak on Agenda 14 real quick. Um, as you guys know, Highway Department is the largest department outside of, uh, the Town Hall. And, uh, usually under the most scrutiny on Facebook and other Facebook pages that aren't administered by the town. Um, I just feel that the town doesn't have an employee or a volunteer that can possibly keep up with the complaints and demand for information in real time that Facebook, you know, demands requires. Um, I would just ask that you really investigate it, uh, before you decide to go through with anything like that. Talk to all the departments and see how they feel about it. And, uh, or better yet, just take no action. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anybody else? Mr. Filio.
Dan Filio, Emergency Management. Uh, just slight, uh, comments on the, um, Hazard Mitigation Plan when it comes up.
Oh, you'd like to be recognized?
Yes.
That's a gimme.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for asking, yeah.
I think that's what John Ruffler was trying to say, too.
Well, no, he wanted to be recognized prior to.
Yeah, but he still owes you a little bit. Talk about when we discuss it.
Yes, he can.
Okay. Yeah, he didn't realize it. Thank you. He's trying to clear up on it.
I didn't know if you'd be hanging around.
I don't know either.
Okay. All right. On item number six, uh, we had a petition from Ashley Byrd, uh, to be, uh, to transfer from a corner regional high school to McCant Tech. Uh, it's a late admission. Since her request, she has withdrawn that request because the, uh, the program is full. So we need not take any action on this at this time. Okay.
Can I just ask one question, Mr. Chairman? About the pending application?
Yes.
Does Miss Ashley Byrd live in Dalton?
Yes, she does.
Yeah, but it should have been on this application.
Yeah.
She hasn't put down her address on the.
No, there's no address.
But you're sure of that?
Yep. Okay.
No, I'm certain of it, because she wouldn't be doing it. But this is a matter of protocol.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Okay. Now, we have some appointments to make. Uh, first appointments are temporary full-time police officers, and I have a memo from Mr. Walto to us dated.
Hmm, ooh, year.
Oh.
And the day.
Yes. I'm confused.
What the heck, why are you?
Should I amend the memo date to the today?
Please.
Okay.
114-19, right, Ken?
Yes.
Okay. This is ratification of appointments to full-time police officers. I hereby recommend for your ratification, the appointment of Reserve Officers Nicholas Godet and Anthony Baroli as full-time, full-time temporary officers effective January 14, 2019, to fill in for two regular officers out due to injuries. Chief Coe's recommendation is included for your information. Thank you for your consideration of these appointments. And I'll read, uh, Chief Coe's memorandum to Mr. Walto dated the 17th of December, 2018. Says, "Greetings, I am requesting to be added to the January 14 Select Board Agenda for ratification, for ratification of the appointment of Reserve Officer Nicholas Godet and Anthony Baroli each to the position of temporary full-time. The appointments would be in effect from January 14. One is projected to last six months while the other is indefinite. The vacancies are due to two full-time officers out recovering from injuries. Civil service requires that we fill a full-time position with a temporary full-time appointment for vacancies expected to last for 30 days or more. Respectfully, Jeffrey E. Coe, Chief of Police." Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we appoint Nicholas Godet and Anthony Baroli as full-time temporary officers effective January 14, 2019, to fill in for two regular officers out due to injuries.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Next, we have the ratification of appointment of Assistant Town Collector. And I will read from, uh, a memorandum from Mr. Walto to us dated today. Um, says, "I hereby recommend for your ratification, the appointment of Deborah M. Levesque to the position of Assistant Town Collector effective January 22, 2019. Such an appointment requires approval of the Select Board in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 39(c). Miss Levesque has 30 years of varied business administration and customer service experience in medical offices and insurance and real estate firms with duties similar to that of Assistant Town Clerk. The Town Collector's request for confirmation of appointment is enclosed with Miss Levesque's letter of interest and resume. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment." And I will read a second memorandum from our Town Collector, Melissa Davis, to Mr. Walto. "I wish to appoint," and that's, this is dated December 20, 2018. "I wish to appoint Deborah M. Levesque of 213 East Street Lenox to the position of Assistant Clerk, Assistant Collector. Miss Levesque has many years of general business experience and has been employed for the past seven years with Dr. Alice Ling, Accessible Medical Arts. Her application and resume is enclosed. Please submit this appointment to the Select Board for confirmation at the next meeting on January 14, 2019." May I have a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Deborah Levesque to the position of Assistant Town Collector effective January 22, 2019.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion?
Miss Levesque, if you have any questions?
Well, I, uh, I'll leave it to the board for any questions at this point in time. Uh, or any comments.
Based on your resume, it's an outstanding appointment.
I would concur with that. You have a great resume as.
Thank you.
And if you would, I hate to make people stand, but, you know, at least raise your hand and say, "Hey, this is me."
Hi. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. And, uh, you have great experience in, uh, in the field that we need, and, uh, it's great that you're being appointed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
I'm sure you are. Melissa, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, we're very happy.
Great.
Can't wait till next week.
Okay. All righty, uh, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions?
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is resolution adopting the Hazard, Hazard Mitigation Plan. And as you know, we have our Emergency Management Director, Dan Filio, here with us this evening. Um, and Dan, I'm gonna just give this to you. I mean, it's, you, I gotta say, kudos for all the work that you did on this, um, and organizing the plan and getting it together and getting it done. A lot of work. If I said that I read the whole thing, I'd be lying, because it's, it's about an inch thick. But from what I did look at, it's, uh, quite thorough and, uh, a job well done.
Thank you. Excuse me. Um, I appreciate that. This is a copy of the paperwork. Um, we had to, at the end of it, we had to allow six months to allow FEMA and MEMA to review it and approve it. Uh, it got approved in less than three months. Um, so we're very pleased with that. Uh, we had to answer some questions, do some work. Um, but there's a lot of people involved in this. I could give you all the names, but it would take us most of the evening. I do want to mention Lauren Garrity from BRPC. She was our coordinator, uh, person we worked with on this. She did the bulk of the work, as for putting it all together, uh, to make it readable. So we really appreciate, uh, the work that she did and BRPC did. But we also have, we've had people from the Highway Department, the Water Department. Gibby Rudd came to meetings and helped us. Um, that's, I mean, the dedication of the people that came through, that was while he was ill. Um, Highway Department, we had the Fire Department, COA, uh, Select Board, we had information from Training Company. Central Berkshire Regional School District was involved in it. Um, Select Board, of course, the Town Manager was very, very helpful and, uh, cooperative with what we needed to do. Um, we're very pleased with the product. Once we get this letter signed, um, we send that off to MEMA. MEMA will send us back a letter acknowledging what the work we can do, and we can move on to what the next plan's gonna be. So I appreciate all the efforts made by everyone who was involved in this. Truly was a team effort. Um, I, I bet most of the people who worked on it haven't read every section, but everybody had sections that they had to, uh, comment on, work on, and it was fantastic the work that we got done. So I appreciate everything. Uh, thank you for your support on this. And, uh, we'll get the letter out, and then we can move on to our next project. Thank you.
Dan, you mentioned that the, the next step, or what's gonna, the MVP?
Yes, MVP program is, is basically the step after this. We're already working on that. Um, we have a committee together. We've already had one formal meeting. Uh, we've met with, uh, the, uh, people from BRPC is also gonna be, are working with us on this. This is going to take what we've discovered and identified in our Hazard Mitigation Plan and see if there's things that we can identify that we need to come up with better plans for and, uh, actions that we can take for them. Uh, once we get that done, then we have another plan that we can move into, so.
What's the timeline?
The timeline on, on the next plan is, has to be done by July 1st of this year.
No, it doesn't give you a lot of time.
It doesn't. But there's, fortunately, we did a lot of the work here. So we can take that, identify areas. For example, um, Walker Brook, Center Pond, they've been identified as areas we have big concern. Flooding's a big concern. So we know where, the areas we have to look at, things we need to look to, and then we can try to come up with ideas of what we can do next, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Any comments from the board?
I'd like to thank Dan as a commitment. Lot of work.
Outstanding, Dan.
Thank you.
Have we gotten anywhere in the FEMA, with FEMA, with the Walker Brook problem?
Um, not really.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I will leave that to the Town Manager to discuss. We're still working on it. Uh, we're looking at, uh, things that we, we're identified we need to do on that. Becky Slick and I are working on some things. John's working on some things for that also.
Okay, other comments? Uh, as I, as I see, I am supposed to sign this.
Yes.
It's not the board, it's, it's just me.
It's a vote of the board, and then the Select Board Chairman signs it.
So I'll need a motion to direct me to sign it or not to sign it, uh, at this point in time.
I make a motion to allow our Chair to sign the FEMA, uh, Mitigation Plan.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? I'll get it to you. I don't, I don't have the hard copy unless Ken has it. Do you have the copies to sign?
I don't have the original.
I didn't see any.
Yeah, she's got the original.
Okay, just, we'll just keep it all separate and sign it at the end of the meeting. That'll be fine.
Um, so you know, once we get the letter back from FEMA, it's going to be posted on our town website. Um, BRPC's gonna put it on their website. Also, some public will always be able to take, look at it and to have reference for it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, it's item number nine. We're gonna open it, as the Licensing Board, at 7:20 PM. And we have, we have two matters that we need to discuss. And the first one is Wilkinson Enterprise doing business as Zips. And, uh, Mr. Wilkinson is here. And the, the main thing that we need at this point in time is a business certificate. It says here, uh, "From a memo that we received from our Administrative Assistant." Said, "We need the business certificate from the Town Clerk's office." Now, do you, is that something, or am I wrong in saying that?
Business is gonna be from the Town Clerk's office or Massachusetts DOR? It's standing.
Well, that's.
Certificate of good standing from the state.
From the DOR?
Yeah.
Okay.
That will be issued with, uh, if you think my license renewed. Unfortunately, I do not have that. I have all of my receipts saying that I'm in good standing. And I also have, and I made an email from the Massachusetts DOR saying they're sending me a paper copy through the mail as of this morning.
What is it that you have now, or, I mean, in hand? In hand, other than what's on your, on your phone?
These are all the receipts that show me I'm in good standing. I've paid my DOR tax until.
Is it something we could see?
Yeah, absolutely. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you a question?
Yes, you may.
Is it possible to print what you just indicated you have on your email, the email you have? Is it something we could print and get a copy of now?
Copy of it now?
Ken, is that something that's possible somewhere?
Yeah, I don't know what the webs, what the website is, dude.
It's a Massachusetts task, not Department of Revenue. All it says is, it's an email to me. Your request for a certificate of good standing has been completed, and the letter contained is distributed. It will be mailed out to you to the address we have a file.
Okay, done by mail.
Okay. Thank you.
The effective date for the one for January 20th is this month. It's early.
Yes, it says payment effective date is the 20th of January.
That's, that's not due until 20th of January. December needs to be paid by 20th of January, November, 20th of December.
Ken, are you, you familiar with this paperwork?
I have not seen one for our licensees, but I'm familiar with certificate of good standing. Typically, it comes from the Secretary of State. Corporations in good standing of the state.
Could you review that? I, it's, I don't. So what you have to get to us is the email, and you're done receiving a hard copy by?
Uh, they go on Thursday, so I'm guessing Wednesday, Thursday?
Okay. And that comes back to us?
Hmm.
Okay.
The only reason I was assessed by the Massachusetts State DOR was, uh, my liquor license was issued in June, and I was shut down due to renovations. So I didn't pile zeros from June until September. So they were, it was actually late, but I worked with an editor named Judith, and she said, "I don't know anything." I was assessed $8,000, and then they retracted that. That was a big problem.
Another question?
Go right ahead.
Are you currently operating?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I just wanna make sure you're, you're allowed to operate. That's, that's my question, and I really, I don't know. Are you familiar with?
Yeah, I am real familiar with this.
Okay.
May I ask a question of the chairman first?
Please, I've been waiting.
No. But I got premises by asking this question.
Yep.
I don't have anything in my folder. What's this all about?
I, I didn't have anything in mine either.
I thought, I thought you would have this. I just got this today in my mailbox.
Oh. That's you?
Yes, you may.
Uh, again, we're back to Mrs. Byrd, or Byrd, or whatever.
No, 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 underneath. The second, the second. On the bottom. On the bottom. Under item number nine.
That's you, John. That's why I said this is, uh, same. Yeah, okay. I never heard of these bizarre problems. Okay, we're talking about the DOR and being in good standing. Being in good standing for what?
For, uh, the state withholding tax, I believe.
Withholding tax?
Income withholding. I was, I was never not in good standing, because, uh, 7%, you pay 7% of your tax, 7% is zero, zero. Nobody.
That's not with, wait, wait, stop. That's not withholding. That's the alcoholic beverage sales tax.
Yes, sales tax.
Okay, that's what you meant?
Yes, that's.
Okay.
Sorry.
A lot of people don't pay, I know. You got until the 20th of the next month to pay for the prior month. You take just gross sales, you multiply it by 7%, send them a check. And you've always done that.
Yep.
Why did this issue come up?
Because I didn't file zeros from when I had an active liquor license till, uh, till I opened the doors.
Well, you haven't had the certificate delivered to us, to the Town Clerk.
So.
Correct?
What's that? Sorry.
The certificate has not been delivered to the Town Clerk as it should have.
No, it is not.
As it should be.
Because I was assessed from the, so it's mainly withheld as a good game. They filed me never not in good standing.
So, if I understand this, the first six months that you had a license, but you weren't operating the business, you didn't file a meals tax thing?
Absolutely.
Right? Because you had no sales?
And it was, yes.
Okay. And then the DOR, in infinite wisdom, when you did file, say, said to themselves, "How come it didn't file for the six, the first six months?"
Yep.
And that created this controversy?
Yes.
Now you're all paid up to date?
Yes.
There's a bureaucracy for you.
Ken, this is the paperwork we'll order, that you see.
It appears to be.
It appears to be. Would anyone like to?
Ah, no.
Okay. So as soon as you get that certificate, it will be.
I'll bring it here.
Carried down to the Town Hall here and given to the Town Clerk. Now, Town Hall is not open on Friday. It's only open until Thursday. Late on Thursday. So if you haven't received it, or whatever, please contact the Town Clerk and just say, "I haven't received it in the mail yet." Give them at least a copy of that email.
Yeah.
That you have, so they know something's going on.
Yep.
And, uh, we'll just take it from there.
Okay.
Now, Ken, do we want copies?
For, yes, we should have a copy for five.
You can keep those.
I can keep these?
I think-
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, Mike, there's a drop box right out front. You get a copy there, you can just drop it in there.
Okay.
Like the town clerk, which is a press light board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bizarre.
The, uh, next is with Berkshire Organics.
Oh, sorry.
Honestly, I thought everyone got this in their mailbox, because I just got it today. Berkshire Organics, there are no, there is not a representative from Berkshire Organics. Did you hear anything during the day at all?
No. Judy tried to contact them.
Again, according to this note or memorandum from our administrative assistant, there has not been a transfer of the liquor, the package store license with the AVCC and the town. Ever received anything. And he is not, and I don't even know the man's name.
I don't either, forget it. But there's a new owner there.
Yeah.
The owner was supposed to have filed a DBA certificate with the town clerk, doing business ads. Because it's not a corporation, as we understand it.
There is no indication that he's done this. A check has been received for $200, but that has to be returned because there is no transfer of the license. So the question we have here is, one, can he operate? And I don't know of any, I think he is all set with the building inspector?
Yeah.
Or the health inspector?
The health inspector.
Health inspector got-
I don't think there's any building inspection issue there.
Is he allowed to operate?
Well, I don't think you sell alcohol or transfer, form the transfer of the liquor license, it's approved by the AVCC.
I would concur with that. Yeah, I would say so too. But he's operating a store too, and his-
Right.
Well, he can operate the store.
That's okay.
Right.
He should come in and file the DBA certificate that's required. It's not a corporation.
But he has not.
He has not. I think he can operate the store. I don't think that prevents him from doing that, but he should be filing the DBA certificate.
But we should tell him clearly that he can't sell alcohol.
Yeah, no matter, DBA, he's just doing business ads, whatever his name is.
Right.
The notifications that we have sent him, has it just been word of mouth that he came into the office and that's it? Has he received any?
Communications have been between him and the department administrative assistant.
Okay, we should do something formal on this and have it hand-delivered to him. We can usually do that through our constable.
Yeah.
Advising of what has to be done, what he can and cannot do, or he'll be found in violation of his license, or a lack thereof.
He could infer a potential transfer down the road.
Yes.
Because he's been acting bad faith.
I don't think we, well. Let's have a vote anyways, to direct Ken to have that letter drafted and delivered in hand.
John, Ken possibly should consult our town attorney.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
He hasn't applied, there's no transfer. Evidently, taken over ownership of the business, he claims, but he hasn't transferred the license.
Right. I mean, some- I've noticed the business is open. I don't, I have not been inside.
He probably should be an immediate cease and desist type of thing to the, and a copy to the AVCC.
Make a motion.
Okay, whatever I just said.
Okay, okay, direct Ken to draft a letter.
A letter to the, I wish we knew his name.
To the owner of Berkshire Organics.
Yes.
Copy to AVCC. But also directing him to-
Cease and desist. Cease and desist sale of alcoholic beverages until the formal transfer of the license that the business now holds to your entity be concluded. Successfully concluded.
Okay. A second?
A second.
Motion is made in second. Is there any further discussion on this? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you. And it is 7:33, we're closed as the licensing board. Now, item 10, we have several requests with regard to the new street lights that have been installed, which I must say, they are definitely different. And the light, I like the light. I don't know how anyone else feels on this. And I'm on a street that has the, just the posts, the decorative lights or whatever you want to call them. And I think I noticed more from that, because they're lower to the ground, that the light, light goes down more than it goes out. Is that the way they're supposed to, is that?
Oh, yeah.
You know, what they're designed to do?
Exactly.
John, did I use the same size bulb, or whatever it is?
That I don't know.
Did they use a street light, any one of those decorative light things?
I don't know.
Nobody?
I believe they're a lower wattage, the cobra heads.
Yeah. They look like they're maybe lower wattage, but they still shine up pretty well.
But the light goes where it's needed.
Yes. Well, with that said, I'm delighted with how they look and how they're functioning.
And the savings is very nice.
Yes, the savings will be nice. The issues that we have here are those, basically, it's in three locations, about lights that have been removed completely, and they are no longer there. So let's take these one at a time, because each one, at least from what I looked at going down the streets and where the lights are currently and whatever, they are unique to each other. Now, the first one is Chestnut Street. But before I get into that, Richard, is this something that you just, you don't, was there something formal that you wanted to say on this, or you just wanted to be part of the conversation?
Part of the conversation if needed.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I looked at them on the, and we'd originally taken them out in discussion with the police chief and the others. And it's decided that they probably weren't needed. But obviously, if there's been people that feel they should go back, you know, I mean, we're only talking about three lights out of the 28 that were getting the people moved.
Yeah, but we haven't gotten an estimate on the cost of each one to be replaced, moved, have we?
No, Becky couldn't, she was out sick today.
Yeah. Well, the first one was on Chestnut Street, and the, initially, the request or complaint came in to Mr. Boyle. I ended up getting it, and I went down and I spoke with the individual who had written to Janet Benoit of 17 Chestnut. And I took a look at Chestnut Street, and as it's set up now with the way the lights are, there is a light on Park Avenue at Chestnut, right on the corner there, which shines out onto Park Avenue. The only other light on that street is on the pole just prior to the cul-de-sac. There are no other lights on that street. Ms. Benoit was looking to have the light placed back on the pole where it was, kind of in front of her house, which is in the center of the street.
She's her second house, yeah, she's almost in the middle.
Almost in the middle. And when I looked at it, and I looked at Oak Street Extension as one, and the other side streets that are down there, they're set up where the pole on the very end of the street, which is on the far end of the cul-de-sac, has a light on it. This one does not. And if I were to change things around here, and I went over this with Ms. Benoit, I would put a light on that pole at the very end of the street.
On the cul-de-sac.
On the cul-de-sac, and the light that was in front of her house placed back, but that, the light that's there taken down. In other words, moving the light that's there now up to where her house is, and then putting a new light in on the cul-de-sac.
The light that's there now, I thought they removed it.
There were two lights originally. There was one in front of her house.
Right.
And there was one just prior to the cul-de-sac. The one that was left was the one just prior to the cul-de-sac.
Right.
So take that one, put it, take that one and place it in front of her house, but install a new light on the pole that's on the far end of the cul-de-sac, so the cul-de-sac is lit up.
Right.
In other words, you're spacing the lights out evenly on the street from Park Avenue to the middle of Chestnut Street to the very end of Chestnut Street. So you don't get that?
Yeah, absolutely, John, that's the solution.
So, but I don't know what the cost is, so I can't give you an idea of what that would cost. The other issue-
An estimate?
I saw some partial estimates come from Tango, but I was-
It's like an hourly rate for each pole, either to install an arm or to install a cobra head or the lighting fixture itself on the old arm. Uh, there's also a cost, if in fact, say this pole at the very end of the street on the cul-de-sac isn't wired for a street light, now you got to wire it for a street light. So there's an added cost. Now, Becky Slick was saying that there is money left in-
Yeah, we have a contingency fund.
The contingency fund to possibly take care of these things. But at any rate, that was my suggestion as for Chestnut Street, moving it around.
John, no, I wasn't going to say anything, but John roughly might just say something.
I was just going to say there's 12 lights left. So the cost to add, to put these lights up where they took them down, is just going to be the labor, not the, you know, not the equipment.
We bought some extras.
What about the arms?
We bought some extra arms too.
Oh, so you have arms?
And we took arms that they took down, some spares that were good.
Oh, okay. So we have the parts?
We have the parts.
We just need the labor? Okay. Well, as for Chestnut Street, I don't know if anyone has any other suggestions or would rather not see it moved around. You know, I'm leaving it open for discussion here.
I think my general sense on all these is, our number one job is for a sense of security. And we need to do whatever we can to put lights back or whatever, within reason. And whatever the plan is that you came up with, I trust you, let's just do it and get it done. I mean, according to John, we got extras and we have a contingency fund, let's just, let's get it done.
Any other comments?
Hopefully, none of the other people on the street have a different point of view, where they don't want a light.
But you're only putting back what was there?
Yeah, but-
Except for that new light, except for the new one on the very end of the cul-de-sac.
There was no light here before?
Same number of lights, I'm correct?
Yes, same number of lights, just moving them around.
Sounds great, John.
Okay. So, can we have a vote on that? Can we take them one at a time?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we turn the light back on on 53 to 55?
No, that's, this is Chestnut Street.
Chestnut Street, okay.
17 Chestnut Street?
17 Chestnut Street.
And install a new light at the-
Install a new light at the end.
At the end on the cul-de-sac.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Actually, the way of the cul-de-sac is not going to be a new light, it's going to move it to the rear of the cul-de-sac.
Yes, basically, yeah, yeah. Okay.
So there's no expenditure there, just the labor cost?
Yeah.
Now, do we, do our folk do this, John's department, or does the company do it?
The company does it.
Okay.
Company does it. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Abstentions? Okay, the next one's going to be 53-55 Glenon Avenue. When I went down there, you could see where the light was in front of that house. It was taken down, and this house is between Stockbridge Avenue and First Street. Just about in the middle of that block. And there are no, there are no lights on Glenon Avenue between those two streets. However, from Main Street to Stockbridge Avenue, there are three lights. Each pole has a light.
Right.
So if we take the light on the middle pole, take it down and put it down by 53-55, it evenly spaces out all those lights down on Glenon Avenue, the way I look.
One thing I want to say on all this, when we're looking at these lights, is, because you and I had talked about this one.
Yeah.
You told me to do the drive-by, take a look. But I know you guys are going to think I'm crazy. I shut my headlights off in park, and it's dark. And that's, when you go around and somebody complains, you got to turn your headlights off and see how dark it is, to realize how dark it is. Because some of these places, like at the end of High Street, Park Ave, it's dark up there.
Yes.
If you get up there and you turn the headlights off, it's pitch black.
Yes, it is.
So when people say, "Hey, it's dark in this area," if you're driving down it and you got your headlights on, ain't a big deal. But if you turn it off, and your words come about crawling around your house, so.
I think, I think it would, because after, after First Street going towards High Street, it appears that every other light has a, every other pole has a light on it, all the way down to High Street. So this kind of evenly spaces out the lights on.
John, you think this will evoke a criticism from whoever's light we're taking away here?
I think it's pretty, pretty bright there between.
Well, I mean, I agree with you completely.
Yeah.
But I guess he isn't here in two weeks, and you took my light, he moved it down here, what the hell was that?
It, to me, it just makes more sense. I mean, I don't know why you want to cluster three lights together when the rest of, the rest of the street isn't even like that. I don't know why we left three lights like that. I really don't. But I understand what you're saying.
No, I'm just trying to pour water.
Where you're going to make one person happy, it would make one person sad.
Right, right.
You know? But-
Just point to the logic of it, that's all.
Yeah, that's all we can do.
I think John has a comment.
John?
Maybe if you were going to do that, I would say, these guys are going to be in Pittsfield for the next four months. Possibly unhook that light you're talking about, see how, what it, it's just a matter of hooking it back up rather than taking it right down.
Okay.
It's just as easy to, so, I mean, these lights are quick to-
Yeah, they put them on pretty quick.
Very quick. Rather than taking it down and then having to put it back up, is all we can probably, they're pretty reasonable guys to work with, so.
Well, if they can do it, and they'll, I'd rather have them come up and do all these three things together, if we in fact are going to do all these three things. So we're going to have to have them come up, take the light, turn off the light, and then wait. I mean, I don't know who's going to make that determination decision.
They still have work to do in town, they're not done.
They aren't done?
They have all the pine gold parks still to do.
Oh, okay, all right.
I imagine there will be some type of pontius too, because there's a cobra head on High Street that never got changed out. So we'll have to figure out what other, what other things we need to fix in town.
Well, then, why don't we, why don't we do that if they are in town? Can you get a hold of them, John?
Yeah.
To turn off that, you know what light I'm talking about? To turn off that light? And then we'll see if we get any feedback.
That's good.
Do you have an address written right there? I know which one, but if you-
It's starting from, starting, it's, there's three poles, there's three lights from Main Street to Stockbridge Avenue. The middle one is what I'm talking about.
And turn, and put the other one back on, 53-55. Turn off that one, and then turn on the other one.
Yeah, we could do that.
Well, why would we turn off the middle one and not turn on the one in front of this?
Well, what I was thinking, if they're going to take the middle one out, if they're going to take that middle one and just bring it down to the, to 53-55.
I don't, I'll be honest, because now you're turning off another light on that street, then it's just going to be darker down there till then. If we-
I didn't go down there at night, what do you think?
I think it's very dark. I think if we, with John, I think with John, we'll shut the middle, or shut the middle one off, turn on the other one. And then if we have to turn the other one back on, we'll just turn it back on. So definitely turn on the one at 53-55. The middle one, we'll just turn it off and see how it goes for a month, and see if people complain that it's too dark.
Yeah.
If they don't, then we'll just take it down. If people do, then we'll turn it back on.
Okay, all right. Does that sound good?
That's very good.
Right.
Your idea, you make the motion?
I'll make a motion, we turn on the light back at 53-55 Glenon Ave. We turn off the second light on Glenon Ave for a month for a trial period, period, and then determining on safety and stuff like that.
Okay.
Second, that motion.
Okay, motion is made in second. Further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Abstentions? Okay. Last one is Ruth Drive. And actually, it's fairly simple. There was one light on Ruth Drive that was taken down, right in the middle of the road. And again, there are no other lights on Ruth Drive, although Ruth Drive is 200 to 300 feet long. They say it is, it is very dark, and for one of the reasons that you were pointing out, Mark, you know, that although there's lights on either end of the street, it just doesn't illuminate towards the middle of the road. And it is a void in there, and it's pretty dark. So their request is to put that light back up on Ruth Drive, on the one that was taken down, which is in the middle of the street. Basically. Okay. Motion? And this is just putting the light back up that was taken down?
Yeah. I'll make a motion, we put-
Yep. I make a motion, we put the light back up that was taken down on Ruth Drive.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. So further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Thank you. Okay, now as for coordinating this thing on Glenon Avenue, you can do the, you can do the coord...
I can go through with Becky.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, thank you, Ken. Do you have anything further to say, Richard, before we close this out?
No, just as Ken and John pointed out, you know, like 99% finished. It's just a few things that have come across as the, the, come back. But they're gonna be in Pittsfield, John said, for like four months, so it's not...
Yeah.
They're gonna get back.
Yeah. Okay. That's a good plan, we can do it. Okay, now, we have... Okay, we have a request from the town clerk. We're discontinuing the AccuVote tabulators and replacing them with Image Cast Vote Tabulators. And in a, an email to Mr. Walto from our town clerk, Deborah Mary, says, "I'm running to ask that you add to the select board agenda for Monday, January 14, 2018, a couple of items requiring a select board vote. And the first would be to vote on the discontinuance of the AccuVote tabulators. As you may recall, we are trading in these machines, therefore, we will also," which, and this is the second thing we need to vote on, "need the select board to vote to, on the implementation of purchasing two new Image Cast tabulators." And I will need us, it says, "I will need to send a certification of these votes to the Attorney General for its approval as well, once the vote is taken." And... This has to be done by the 12th of February.
And not 2018?
Not 2019, right. No. And we have to do that today too, instead of 2019.
Yeah, I think Debbie just pointed out that the Capitol request was back the last year.
Yeah, and when she does send that draft in, just, just note that she needs to change the dates to 19, instead of 18. So, this is a formality, by the looks of it, it's just something we have to do to make these purchases. She sent along documentation on the why's and wherefore's of it. So, I make a motion?
I make a motion, we discontinue the use of AccuVote tabulators.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. So further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Okay, the next one.
I make a motion, we purchase two new Image Cast tabulators.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. So further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Next, we have petition 561-236, Hubbard Avenue. And... This is a letter from our town planner, and it's to all the boards, as usual. Pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 11, "You are hereby notified that an application has been made to the planning board for a special permit under Section 350-22, Chapter 5 of the Dalton zoning bylaws to operate an auto repair shop in the PIDD zone. A copy of the application is enclosed for your review. Please inform the planning board in writing of any concerns or comments you may have regarding this application. Note that you are required to send a copy of your comments and application to the applicant as well, per MGL Chapter 48, Section 11. Your response must be received by the planning board prior to the public hearing, which is scheduled for Wednesday, January 16, 2019, at 7:00 PM in Callahan. And this is the use of the old cap center across the street from Downing Industrial Park, I believe. Or Downing Industrial, whatever the road is, Parkway Park?
Downing Industrial Parkway.
Right, yeah, Parkway. So, any, any comments or concerns?
I've driven by this place probably five times a day, very clean out there. They've got some cars out there now, which is absolutely, looks really nice, really nice.
Do you have something, Ken?
Dalton Redevelopment Authority, what day we meet, Ken? January 9th?
That's Wednesday.
Yeah, we took this matter up. Now, it's interesting that this is, all this property down here is owned industrial and commercial. And as an ordinary course of events, anybody wanting to operate this type of business wouldn't have to apply for a special permit, they can do it by right. But the town, in its infinite wisdom, several years ago, established the expedited PIDD, expedited permitting area as an overlay over all that property in that area. So now, as a condition of meeting the criteria in a PIDD, something that should be allowed by right now needs a special permit. And the DRA felt that we enthusiastically supported this application, and were somewhat dismayed by the fact that this potential businessman is now gonna be subjected to $400 to $500 in fees and have to go through an elongated permitting process, when...
It should be by right.
By right.
The question was right.
It's actually that. It was one of those things we all supported, the PIDD, with the thought of luring a manufacturing concern here down there somewhere. But it never happened, and now somebody just caught up, but essentially something we overlooked.
What, you know, what could we do to change that, then?
I don't think we could do anything between now and, you know, what was, we have to go through with this process the way it's written, started.
Well, I mean, I, I know that in the future...
But we definitely wanna change it.
I think that, we didn't vote on it or anything to DRA, but I think that was their intent too, that there was something that we could deal with this issue in.
Yes, yes.
And I think Ken, as the chairman of DRA, would speak to the planning board, to address this inequity.
Amendment to the zone via requires...
Amendment to the zoning bylaws.
Okay, town meeting?
It's a, it'll be the annual town meeting.
Okay. Is it something that can be done at this annual town meeting, or we're gonna be too late?
It could, or if not, a special in June.
A special in June?
Yeah.
Well, somebody might wanna work towards it.
Is there any chance you wanna show up on Wednesday, Ken, at our meeting?
I will be out of town.
Oh.
Gonna be sunny Philadelphia.
All right, very good. I might mention it at the planning board.
Becky, Becky's conversant.
Oh, okay, good, yes, all right.
Yeah, if you get the...
Yeah, get it started. We really, yeah, it really sounds like it needs to be changed.
Amended?
Yeah, amended, yeah.
Good.
Well, I'm in favor of this.
Yeah. As I said, the DRA enthusiastically supported this application.
Any comments of the contrary, or comments in favor, or whatever?
I totally agree with it.
Okay. Be a motion to direct Ken to...
Do I make a motion?
They'll write a letter.
Write a letter to, in support, or seeing no, actually, we're just, we're just supposed to state that we see no...
Oh, you have no opposition?
Or we see no issues with the permit application?
And actively support it.
Okay.
I make a motion that we have Ken draft a letter and no, no, no concerns about this.
We're actually in favor, maybe.
Yeah, we're actually in favor.
A second?
I would second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
Just in the real estate sale Sunday, that property was sold from Pavaro, that was his name?
Yeah.
To just Scott Hall, whom I don't know, the rest of the board knows it. So the guy's made an in-faith commitment to the town of Dalton by buying that property. And...
Well, it hasn't been used, well, they were using it during the summer, really, I guess. But prior to that, it hasn't been used for quite some time, I'm glad it's being redeveloped, so... Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Okay. Okay, next is my report on the corner school building committee and the regular school committee. I'm gonna start with the regular school committee. Give me a moment to get my stuff together here. Okay, school committee, I'll start with their last meeting, that was, of the school committee was January 10. And this is an announcement for every, basically for everyone here, is that the seven-town advisory meeting is Tuesday, February 21, 7:00 PM, at Nessicus Regional Middle School. And the seven-town advisory meeting is when all the seven towns, or at least hopefully all the seven towns, send representatives from the select board or from the finance committees to come and find out what's going on with the, with the school prior to budgets. And in this particular case, the two main topics, the first one's gonna be the FY '20 tentative budget, which was just given out on the 10th, and I'll explain a little bit about that right after this. But then the building project update will also be discussed. And by that time, and I'm skipping ahead, but I'll, I'll get more into this when I go through the building committee report on the 14th of February. The school building committee and the school committee, okay, will be taking a vote on whether to approve the plan and costs of the building project. So this'll be the week after that takes place. And as I said, the tentative budget, the FY '20 tentative budget was presented to the school committee. It is online, if you wanna go on the CBRSD website and take a look at it, it's online. But in general, everyone wants to know the bottom line here. The budget increase, the, the general budget increase is 1.31%. Last year was 1.65%. Now, this includes funding for a part-time school resource officer. What those plans are actually for the school resource officers has not been finalized. The superintendent and our police chief are still working on that. It is, still, there's still a lot of things that have to be worked out. And I don't know any of the details on that, other than it's gonna be two or three days a week. And I think it's gonna be between Nessicus and Wakona. So I'm really not sure how it's gonna work out. The overall assessment increase to the towns, now this is the overall assessment, this is in our assessment, will be 2.05% this coming year, so far. And these things always change, this is just the first, first budget that's come out. And so everyone gets a feel for these budgets again. There's a maintenance and operating budget. Now, the maintenance and operating budget, our overall assessment of that budget is 60.16% of that budget for the district, which differs from capital budget assessment, which in our case can range, depending on the school, can range anywhere from zero, like in Beckett-Washington, to 91.9% in Craneville. So in other words, when they have a capital project in one of those schools, depending on the number of students you have in the school, depends on the amount of your assessment. So there are two different percentage assessments when it comes down to this budget, okay? Everyone understand, understand that, okay? Wakona, just so everyone knows, and it'll have a bearing on, on what I talk about with the building committee, our assessment for capital projects there is 66.7%, rounding it up. It's actually 66.667, so 66.7%. So as I said, of the schools that are in the district, it depends on how many students you have going to that school, depends on what your assessment's gonna be for a capital project. Collective bargaining with the, with the various collective bargaining units is continuing. It's a continual process constantly. And after you get done with one, you start with another, there's five different bargaining units, and they're all kinda spaced out, so it's all separated, so it's, it's continual, it's continual. Now, long ago, Bob asked for, these are mine. Bob asked for capital projects for this, that the school has planned out, like we do. We have a five-year capital, capital improvement plan, what we're gonna buy, or what we're gonna do with the town hall. I'll give you this one first. Did you pass these over to, to Ken? Okay, now, this, if you read it, goes by school, goes by fiscal year, out to FY 2023. If you look at FY '19, because we're still in FY '19, and you go down, you know, through Beckett-Washington, Craneville, Kittredge, and Nessicus, you'll see these variety of things like replace rear entrance doors at Craneville. Replace carpeting with rubber flooring per section at Craneville. You flip it over, and it still has the central office and, I believe, district-wide grounds, okay? But at the bottom of all this is the grand total. Now, I'm just looking at FY '19, all right? And the grand total for FY '19 is $80,000, $80.500, $80,500. And you'll see where there's a $53,000 price tag there, and underneath it says rural aid grant. This district got a ton of money from the rural aid grant, like $204,000 that has to be spent by the end of the fiscal year. So you say, well, why don't they spend it, spend all the 80, uh, all, you know, take care of the entire $80,000? Well, they're also supplementing with that rural aid grant, things such as technology in the schools, which costs a lot, which is on their budget, so it cuts down the actual costs or, or overall increase on the budget. So they're spreading these, they're spreading these, this rural, this rural aid grant out as best as they can for a number, for a number of costs, or a number of projects. So when you wanna go out further years, FY 2020, 21, 22, 23, you'll see, again, they'll list it by school, central office, and grounds, what they have planned and the overall costs. And each year, the costs are different. And this is a, it's a variable, because these things can change. They're either gonna do the projects, or they may add-on projects. But it's like with us, if, if something comes up where you need to have a capital improvement of some sort that they didn't think of, they're gonna tag it on to that fiscal year. So this is fluid, and it's kind of a, a starting, a starting point. But to answer, to answer your question, this is what's happening. Now, if you wanna look at it in a... Now, if you wanna look at it, uh, in electronic form, again, it's, it's on the, uh, it's on the CBRSD website, in the budget, under a, they call it PEID, P-E-I-D-E, I think it's called, the, under the, under the tab, it's towards the end of the budget. So if you wanna look at it electronically, it's also there. Any questions about this?
No, thank you.
Okay.
John, just one quick question.
Sure.
There's nothing on here for Wacona.
Let me see.
Does that mean they stopped maintaining the property?
No, it's just that they don't have any big plans for it.
Yeah, okay.
Except for possibly building a new Wacona, so, uh, and, good point, John.
Yeah.
Good point. So I'm gonna pass out this other one. And all this is, is a tabulation of what took place, let me pass that over to, okay, what took place, um, during fiscal year 2018, these are completed projects, so you get an idea of, of what, um, was expended. And in this particular case, uh, there was $152,240 expended with grants and other funds paying for $18,500 worth of those improvements. Y'all see that? Okay. Any questions, or? And again, there's, there's nothing there for Wacona, or something else.
Yeah.
But there is a new mower for the grounds.
They're gonna have a mower.
Right. Okay, I'm gonna go on, that's, that's all there is for the School Committee. Is there any questions about what I discussed? Next.
Again, it's a reiterate.
Yeah.
Again, April 6th, Saturday, April 6th, is the big day.
Yes, it is.
They had the changes.
I'll get into that.
The district-wide vote, people ask that all the time.
But I'll get, I'll get into that because of, uh, what's going on, there's been some changes there, not in dates, dates are the same. Uh, but the next School Committee meeting is January 24th, 7:00 PM at Nessicus. Okay? Well, you may wanna, you may wanna put this down in your books, too, February 28th, School Committee has their public hearing on the budget, if you wish to attend. That sometimes can be very interesting, but if the, if the budget comes in low, like it looks like it's gonna be coming in as low, um, usually there's not a lot of discussion at that meeting. But still, um, it is, uh, is something good to attend. So, anyway. Okay, Wacona School Building Committee, um, the last meeting was December 13th, 2018. Now, I was unable to attend that meeting because of a family matter which took me out of state. And there was a discussion, well, there was a lot of discussion. And I'll just go over some of the topics that, uh, from the, from the minutes. And again, these minutes are online, under Wacona School Building Committee. And after going through the general validation of agenda, responses from the audience, and approval in the minutes, um, there was a review of the upcoming schedule, which John alluded to with the, with the dates, that, that schedule really, really has not changed, it hasn't changed any, as for dates of meetings, uh, and as for dates of votes. Uh, there was a discussion on technology and security, uh, design for the project, architectural design update, materials, structures, systems update. Now, this is, this is where it's, it's, uh, important to note what took place. The other ones were more or less, um, well, let's, let's say nothing was, nothing was changed, or approved, or added on, or whatever. Uh, but in the materials, structural, systems update from, from our architect, um, it was discussed about making the building net zero. Uh, there was also discussion, uh, on the heating system, and, um, minimizing long-term costs, maintenance costs, minimizing or eliminating, uh, the use of fossil fuels and emissions. Uh, the one, the one big thing that was, that was talked about was a geothermal system, or geothermal field. Does everyone know what I'm talking about when I say that? Okay. Well, for those who don't, it's a, it's a system where you're using the earth's temperature to heat and cool a building by the use of wells, um, in a field, and using the water from the wells, and there's either an open system or a closed system, you're either gonna use, an open system uses the water from, well, from the wells, when you, it's like an artesian well. Or a closed system is a system where it's like your heating system in your house, where it's capped, and you have water put into the system, say through, well, through our, um, our own water system, or drinking water system, and you use that to circulate this water that's at a constant temperature, which I believe, Ed, correct me, is 52 or 54 degrees?
Pretty about deep you go, and, yeah, but it'd be about that, yes, exactly, yes.
The, um, theory behind it is, if you keep the building at a, at that constant temperature, it's easier to heat, it's easier to bring a building up from 52 or 54 degrees than it is from 30 degrees, obviously. And it's also easier to cool it down, um, if it's at that temperature already, in the summer. Which, um, well, I'll get into that later. So when the discussion was made, uh, about putting in the geothermal field, um, then that would be over and above the lead silver level of construction. Now, the lead silver level of construction, and Ed, fill in the blanks that I leave out if you think it's necessary, 'cause you know more about this than I do.
I don't know if I know more about it.
Okay.
I will fill, I'll drop.
It's, it's another, everyone knows what our stretch code is, that we voted in, corrected, was that energy efficiency of new buildings with insulation, how tight a building is, windows, making everything more energy efficient. Well, the lead silver level is over and above that, okay? At a minimum, we have to build at our stretch code. But it was decided a long time ago that we're gonna build to the lead silver. And this discussion was to go beyond that and to use the geothermal field. And it was thought, or it is thought, that the additional savings is 5%, 5 to 6% of energy savings beyond the lead silver level. Okay, am I making myself kinda clear? All right. The, the issue at hand is the system itself is a $2 million additional price tag to the project, of which is non-reimbursable. Now, remember I talked about non-reimbursable costs for the project? You have certain things that MSBA will reimburse for, and certain things that they will not reimburse for, and they will reimburse for, well, those things that they can, it's a 54%? I almost lost on that, I think it's 54% right now? But those, non-reimbursable costs, or parts of the project, the district has to pay for. And this is, this is one of those things. So, um, the annual, the annual savings is thought to be, at this point in time, $25,000 a year. So you talk about return of investment, that's another thing that came up. And you'll get a, it's a, it's a variable, but you're talking 50-plus years at least, 50 to 80 years, if you use simple math, and it's, this'll change, because over the, over the course of time, energy costs are gonna go up, they always do, they don't seem to go down. So you don't really know where it's gonna be, but if it was just simple math of $25,000 a year, it would be 80 years to pay off that $2 million. But that's why it's a variable between 50 and 80 years, 'cause you really don't know, you really don't know. It was voted to do this, it wasn't a unanimous vote, um, when it was, when it was voted in.
They voted to actually go to the higher level than the silver?
Yes.
I, I, I'm surprised.
Yes, well, this is where I, this-
I'm an environmentalist, and I like the idea of, 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 you know, cutting back on fossil fuels. Economically, I don't, you know, it isn't gonna really, in my opinion, be, be a savings. But my real concern is, if we have to raise the initial price of what we have, the raise of $2 million or even more, this is, this could kill the project. And that is going, i- it is really something I think that needs to be considered, the initial shock of how many millions we need, and then add a few more million to it.
You're, you're, you're voicing-
And I'm an environmentalist, but I, I also think we really need a new school, and I just don't wanna jeopardize that possibility of getting one.
That's, it's, it's, this is my concern too, that's why I have a concern about, about this, it's, it's not what geothermal can do.
Right.
It's how much we have to expend right now.
Initial, and, and, right, the startup.
But the, the vote was, the, the motion that was voted, now, I'll read it to you, is that the, it says that the SBC, the School Building Committee approves geothermal as a heating cooling approach for the new Wacona Regional High School building, with the understanding that this will increase our cost to build by at least $2 million.
At least.
So the, I didn't, until I saw the minutes, I didn't know that's how it was worded. But, um, again, and there are arguments on both sides. I have, I have, uh, the same concerns that you do, um, I was, I am, I, I wanna see, I wanna see the, the new building, but I have a problem with this cost, I have a big problem with this cost. So between the time I got back and, and got in contact with, um, Tom Canlehan and Charme Armikos with regard to this, 'cause Tom emailed me, and I was able to get the email while I was away, and I found out about it before I came home. I've had a number, there's been a number of email exchanges, meetings, um, whatever you wanna, whatever you wanna call it, and, uh, I made some suggestions of, well, first, suggested that there would be a, like a menu vote. You know, you either don't want the school, or you want the school as, as we had planned to the lead silver, or you want the, the plan to also include, um, the geothermal field, like having three choices. Well, you can't do that, it's against the regulations for the MSBA. So that's out of it. But I'm not sure if it can't be something that can still be separated, and I haven't gotten a clear answer on this yet, whether you can vote for the school, like we were gonna vote for the school, and then take the geothermal field and use it for an addition, additional capital project.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
And that gives, that gives the voter some type of flexibility on how they vote on this project? I don't know if that can be done or not, and I don't know if it will be done.
I think it would have to be a different day, a different-
Ken was also telling me, and I've, I've tried to contact the Town of Stockbridge, because they had an issue with their geothermal field, which they are no longer using, and they built it, what, seven to 10 years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanna find out the why's and wherefore's of what it is. It could be, it could be that it was an open system, and it filled with sand, and they couldn't, they couldn't use it, I don't know. There's a lot of reasons why a geothermal field fails.
That is another issue I have, is you actually think this is gonna continue to work for, I like the period of, you know, 50 years, this is very optimistic.
Well, it, like, I don't think it's, when you, when you stretch it out, it won't be 80 years, but the first, the first estimate I got when I asked, I go, "So how long's it gonna take to get back our $2 million?" "Oh, 50, 60 years."
I, I worked at a corporation where we had, we, we used, this, tried to use the system, and we discontinued it, yeah. Now, we did use it for maybe 15 years, but eventually it started costing us so much more money, with the problems associated with it, you know, the leakage, it just was, the pipes, that, things break down.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You know, the maintenance.
But, uh, again, as I said, this is where, this is where my problem is. I'm not behind this plan as I was before, because of this.
But is this definitely part of what will be the initial cost? I mean, or is it too late to cut back on that?
I'll find out this, this Thursday, because we have a meeting on Thursday, and I'm hoping that this gets brought up and discussed. And that's why I wanted to make sure that we had this kinda discussion, to get a feel for what the-
I mean, I've talked to a few people in, in town, and actually some that live in Ingsdale, but they're sort of like shocked when you tell them what we're talking about in millions.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, "Well, we can't do that," is what, their initial thing is, you, we can't, I mean, to just add any more money to this.
The way they figure the field that we build is, it's a size of the field, and this is not the mechanics getting the water into the building. But the field is about the size of a football field.
Right.
And it has 125 wells or so, at about 400 or 500 feet deep each, uh, to be able to, uh, efficiently-
Right.
-cool or heat the building. But they still have to figure that out with test, test, test wells, so, test points. So, um, the final vote of the, of the Building Committee and of the School Committee to approve the project cost and plan is February 14th. Um, project, project costs should be known by the end of this month. I would like to-
The end of January or the end of February?
End of January.
End of January, wow.
I would like to have this discussed and, um, have us come to a consensus of vote, whatever you want, to either endorse or not endorse this. Some Select Boards, well, I can't say some, I know of one Select Board, which is, which is Peru, uh, which is not endorsing this project. But I wa, I wanna get all the information in before we have any type of decision made on this, whether it's pro or whether it's con. And I was hoping to have us make this, or have this discussion, have this vote on February, our February 4th meeting.
February 4th?
Right, that's 10 days before the final vote.
Now, may I say something? It's my understanding that the Green Committee would be in favor of this.
Yes.
It's all the Green Committee.
Yes, they are.
Ken, I got it. A question.
Sure.
Maybe you can answer that at the meeting and get back to us. If you adopt this geothermal proposal for heating and cooling the building-
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't, the building no longer requires a giant boiler.
Oh, yeah, it will.
It will?
It will.
Why?
Because it can only heat up to the, the temperature of the water that's being circulated through the building, which is 54 degrees. So you gotta bring the building up to 54 degrees, so you need a heating source.
So you still need a heating source?
Right.
I mean, obviously you need duct board or pipe board, depends on what kind of a system they're navigating, hot, forced hot air, or, um-
It would probably be forced hot water.
Forced hot water?
Yeah.
But you would just use less fossil fuel to heat it, 'cause you'd be-
Which still require-
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Oh, see?
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's why it doesn't do away with the energy cost, it just reduces the-
Slightly does.
It reduces the fuel cost.
Yep.
Like $25,000 a year, and we're gonna take 80 years to pay for it, I got all that. Okay, just one other follow-
Just remember, not, it's probably not 80 years.
I think some people have calculated it to be more like 30 years.
Tell you what, quick caveat, you talked about adding non-reimbursable cost after the construction costs are, are determined, and one of the issues we talked about, and you were going to get some- And one of the issues we talked about, and you were going to get some prospective figures, is the cost that we're going to incur for the restoration of the playing fields, parking lot, and additional outside architectural, landscape type work.
That'll be part of the project cost, the project cost. Okay, that's, when I say project cost, that means everything. Parking lots, fields, building, and that takes, say it's seventy-seven million dollars, and of the project cost, we're gonna get reimbursed, say, forty-four percent of that, something like that, or forty-five percent of that. So the rest of that is up to the district and the towns to pay for.
Right. And I just wonder if we had any handle on that figure?
No, that's the figure that I should have by the end of the month.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great.
I hope to have, I've been told by the end of the month should have it.
I just wanna reiterate my position, I totally agree with what Ed said here, this doesn't seem like a path we wanna go down. And it may seriously jeopardize the opportunity of the school just to get an affirmative vote.
Ed, you said that the Green Committee supported this?
The last time I went to a Green Committee meeting, that was the sense, they didn't take a vote, but the sense was, the majority, if not all of them, were gonna probably support it.
Do we know if anyone was there at that meeting?
So I think we should invite them. I should point out that I have no longer a member of the Green Committee, because I have so many conflicts, I have, like, I'm twenty-seven committees, so I couldn't go to them, so I asked not to be a member anymore. But the sense I had was, they do believe this is a good thing. And they've even said, and I'm not sure that, in my opinion, this is quite correct, that even if you put the wells in and the field is the size, you could still use the field for something. But I'm not so sure that might not produce some problem long-term when you have to make some adjustments with the wells.
There were members from our Green Committee there, Windsor, Hinsdale.
At the school?
At the meeting.
And they were advocating for it then?
Yes, yes.
John, did you say who was there?
Cheryl Rose was there from our committee, and Richard, well, I should say Hall, not Hill. Mary Stuckland from Hinsdale. Stu Beznoff from Windsor. I know that there's, I thought that there was somebody else. I know there were other people there, they're just not mentioned, they're probably not those that spoke. Those are the people that are mentioned because they spoke at the meeting. So, so that's my plan as for what our action should be. So on the fourth of February, you know, we'll discuss it and see if we wanna make this, make this-
I would suggest that you specifically invite the Chair, let the Chair know of the Green Committee. David, you know, that that's gonna be a discussion, and I think they would show up and give their point of view and why it might be a worthwhile thing to do.
Okay. Oh, yeah, the other thing, and I'm pretty sure it probably will be discussed, because during the conversations that I had after all this, and the mention of air conditioning came up in the building, and it was mentioned that the building was gonna be all, all air, all air-conditioned. And I questioned that because I didn't remember discussing it at a Building Committee, and come to find out, it hasn't been, but it's been, I guess, the assumption or the base plan of the Subcommittee and the contractors all along, that it would be air-conditioned. I really don't have a problem with air conditioning that school, and it's not just for, it's just not for students. Because you gotta look at equipment, tech, you know, computers, these new, the new technology that our school will be using, because one of the things that everyone's been advocating for is twenty-first century education. And to do that, it's different than having an IBM typewriter in business class.
Definitely, interior climate control.
So, these things have to be in a climate-controlled environment, humidity, blah, 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 whatever you wanna call it. So when you think about it, yeah, okay, it is probably a necessary yield, so.
But, well, also, what's that gonna add to the tab?
That should already have been calculated into this process from the get-go. If what they're telling me, this was set at the baseline at the beginning, that they were gonna put AC in there, then it should already be calculated, which, again, I ask that we at least have everyone on the same page at the next meeting with regard to air conditioning, so that, you know, these type of questions, you know, that do come up, are answered. And that's all. But, again, I look at AC not just for people, it's for the rest of the stuff that's in the school, so.
There are some hot days before the end of the school year, really hot and go for the-
But, yeah. So that's, that's the way it is right now, and as I said, Thursday... Thursday, the seventeenth, at three PM, is Wakona Building Working Group. This is, this is a group that gets together with the architect prior to the regular Building Committee meeting. So that's at three PM in the, at Wakona in the library, and then at four-thirty PM at Wakona in the library is the regular Wakona Building Committee. So-
You need a consensus on the two million dollar addition?
No, not at this point in time, not at this point in time. I think it's something you need to digest. I've had, I've had, I've had a couple weeks to really dig into this, and my feelings haven't changed on it, and for the same, for the reasons that have been stated at this table tonight, that's how I feel about the project in general. You gotta look about, look at this from the perspective of what is needed for the school to get the school built, I guess, versus what is nice to have. Do we really need it? And, yes, I understand, as I said before, I understand what geothermal does, you don't have to convince me about how it works. But the points that y'all were bringing out, I mean, you know, it's just-
John, if they didn't go for the geothermal, what type of fuel would they use to, or contemplating using to fire?
Oh, it'd be gasoline oil, like they were, and it will be gasoline oil anyways.
Need a combo?
No, one or the other?
Well, it, it, probably gas. But if it was decided to use both, you can use both, because you have these type of earners or whatever that can do-
Well, I think that's what's in there now, where the one thing is switch from one thing to the other.
I believe gas.
Just a hundred percent gas?
I think so.
One of those schools has one of those type of boilers where you can switch from gas to oil or back and forth?
Nescus uses propane.
Really?
They've got propane tanks buried out front. And they may use a combination of propane and oil. That may be the school.
Okay, thanks.
I never looked into that, so I don't, I don't know.
So, are we gonna have it as an agenda item at our next meeting, though, about whether we have a position on the two million plus?
I was gonna do it on the fourth.
Oh, okay.
Just in, just in general, because if things change with this meeting that's coming up on the seventeenth, I'll put something on the agenda.
Okay. But at some point, it'll be on the agenda.
Yes, it will.
That'd be great.
It will.
I think that's fair, and we have people from both sides invited, before we take a vote.
Questions or comments?
No, I mean, there's no way I can support that two million dollar increase, no way. It's just, costs will never get back, I mean, by the time we pay it back, the school will be have to replace.
And it's the shock to the, some people on fixed income that are elderly here, they're so struggling now, just a couple more dollars, it means a lot to them.
Like, oh, yeah, and this too. Come on, like, it was gonna be a battle to begin with, and- If you want, if you wanna, if you wanna get a sense again, and you may have it already, and it's one of the, one of the documents that I looked at was our 2013 housing study that was done by BRPC, where they talk about, oh, what's the term? I'd have to look it up. Hang on a second. There's a, a cost, housing cost burden, homes in town here, and you get, you get an idea of just how many families, whether they rent or whether they own their own home. Because even if you rent, you still indirectly pay taxes because your landlord's gotta pay the taxes, and it gets shovelled off onto you and that type of thing.
Just a quick question on that. How would the two thousand be financed?
The two million?
Yeah.
It would be part of the building project?
It would be part of that. So it would be paid off over the thirty years or whatever it is?
Yeah.
Well, how much would Dalton be on hook for since we're the largest one?
Well, that's what I was, I was telling you about assessments.
Because it's Wakona.
Because it's Wakona, it's sixty-six point seven percent.
Two thirds of two million.
So it comes out to like nine point three.
Let me just say, I'm not so sure, would it be only two million?
Yeah, that's why, that's why I said at least two million dollars, so I don't know. I don't know.
You know, you think, before they went out, and I, it sounds like they've already approved this.
The Building Committee has already said yes to this.
Yeah.
Okay? As I said, it wasn't a unanimous yes. There might have been a couple more no's if, say, if I and other people were there, but it still would have passed. So, I mean, on the committee, there's twenty-some odd people on the committee, so.
Like Ed said, he's an environmental person, and if he's saying no, there's no way that it, I mean, it's just-
Well, it doesn't mean the other environmental people listen to you.
No, I know, but, well, it's, that's just it, I mean, this isn't, this isn't a gimme type of expenditure. You know, it's, it's a big deal.
Part of my objection is that it could, that could be the difference, that we could kill the new high school, and that is just not reasonable, we end up with nothing. We end up with nothing. And we have to fix the old building, and we not get reimbursed for that. This is, it would be a terrible loss if we don't get the new school okayed.
Any other comments? Okay. Why don't we move on?
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, that's part of the agenda.
Oh, wow, yeah, we just got quite a bit here.
Still got stuff to do.
Yeah.
I don't even know if I still have my agenda.
You could borrow mine.
Oh, I got it here. Thank you, anyways.
Thank you.
Okay, the consideration of Facebook page for town. Now, the reason I put this on is because I received an inquiry from Richard Frederick, who was with Dalton Community Television, and seeing that it was on our items for future agendas, I figured, well, we might as well talk about it now, seeing that there seems to be a, an interest in someone doing it. And from Rich, it says, hi, John, I heard it mentioned on the November twenty-sixth Select Board meeting, an interest in creating a Town of Dalton Facebook page. I'm interested in some additional work and opportunities, and I was thinking I could use video photography to create a visual social media page that represents all the town departments. Will there be a job posting for this position? Please keep me in mind if such an opportunity opens up for applications. Thank you. And that's signed, Richard Frederick. Now, I spoke with Ken, and if we're serious on this, and if we're serious about building a page or doing something, you know, we need to find out funding, we need to have a plan, and how we're gonna fund this, who's gonna be the contact person in town, like John was mentioning.
I had a good point.
You really have to, you really have to monitor this on a daily basis. Now, I don't know, in PDs, it's one of the reasons why, way back when, when I was chief, we had a quasi-page, Dalton Police Department webpage, but then it was talked about, you better be monitoring it all the time, because if someone raises a complaint or has an issue and you don't respond to it, you could be held liable for not responding to it. So you have to have someone always watching it and always working on it. So, these are things that we have to figure out if we're gonna go forward with this, and, you know, I don't know, Ken, what's your, what's your feelings on funding for this? Is this something that would be a totally separate line item or a budget?
Well, we have to figure out what it would cost, and right now, we don't have, there's no budgeted amount for that, if it's gonna cost us something. And beyond that, there's a consideration of who's, who's going to do this, you know. Right now, just, we are in the middle of starting to redo our website, it's been well over ten years.
Yeah.
So we're gonna do a complete redo. Now, I have Becky Slick help, who means far out of her job description is town planner, she's just very cooperative and interested as the other person, helping the town redo its website, but it almost need a communications person to constantly monitor the website and a Facebook page, and make sure that, you know, the right communications are going out and being received and being responded to.
Well, Bill, Bill's still doing things on it too, Bill Shadon?
He does, but he can't be as actively involved as Louise Frankenberg was, because she was retired when he was not.
Yeah, that's true.
He does what he can.
Yeah.
I know that the, Dan Filio set up a Facebook page for emergency management, and Kelly Peasey set up a Facebook page for the Senior Center. I don't know how much time they spend actively monitoring, I think there's more on the Senior Center page, but, you know, not participating, participating in Facebook myself, I can't give you a good description of what it would take, I just know it would take time. And I have a little time now to monitor our website and update it and that kind of thing. So I think I would find it difficult to master a Facebook page as well as the website.
Well, Mark has been mentioning, for almost three years, I mean, the need for a Facebook page, and I certainly agree with that, and I actually think that it could even be a little bit broader. It could also, when people are looking for a place to visit, or where to stay, and or something you might wanna do in the Berkshires, there could also be a little bit of a selling point to visit Dalton. And I don't think we do very much about really, you know, pointing out how great it would be to, you know, stop by Dalton and then walk the Appalachian Trail and see some of the old buildings. But, I mean, it could encourage people to visit the town, so, I mean, I think it could even bring in some more money to the town.
There's some stuff that I had thought about doing on my page, like posting pictures of beautiful parts of the town and having photo contests, and who wins this, and who won a gift certificate to Dewey's or one of the other restaurants and stuff like that, and there's all kinds of stuff, but I can't do it from my page.
But Rich, Rich, I know, works at the studio, I've seen some of the work he's on, he does beautiful work, he can easily put together, you know, a couple videos. I would envision that it would be a two-part thing, where initially the person would have to spend a lot more hours, you know, it may be a couple almost full-time weeks to get the really, the basics of it and make it really interesting. But then there is somebody, something is needed probably to be thinking about it half an hour some days every day, that might need to be, you know, updated, meetings, corrections, and then also school closures right away. I mean, John Roughery had a good point about the roads and everything, that would have been useful to have some of that information, it might have avoided some of the difficulty they had on Wednesday morning and the snowstorm. I think it's something, you know, an app for not raising taxes, but I think this is something that's really very useful and enough important, that we should try to find the money for this and get it started.
Almost like a pitch man, or a woman.
The page?
Pitch, no, pitching the town.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yeah, no, and marketing the town. I mean, and that is something we really need to do, and get more people to come to the restaurants and see things, and the, you know, the- restaurants and see things, and the paper museum, the Who's House, we really want to do that.
Well, guess what we need first is a plan.
Yes.
Okay. And I don't mind sitting down or contacting Rich again. Evidently, he must have some ideas here. If he has done it before, maybe he can give us some guidance. Of course, it would be a voluntary type of thing.
Initially, yeah.
If we could just meet with him, and then go from there. And...
Well, maybe two people from the Select Board could meet with him. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be any kind of a, you know, that would be less than the majority, and that would be...
Well, yeah, that's what I was, I was thinking. Rich has made, Rich has made contact with me, so I don't mind being one of those people. If I could have, depend on somebody else to be there with him. Okay, I'll let you know when we can, we can meet. What's good timing for you?
Just name it, just name it.
Well, if we do something, my best days are Mondays and Fridays during the day.
Perfect.
So if I set something up with Rich, and we sit down and have a confab and figure out what to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
You're all glassy-eyed over there, so, you know.
Thanks for waking me up.
Yeah, really.
Okay, my report's going to be very brief, Mr. Chairman. We've already talked about, we've been talking about the streetlights, but you know, the project's substantially complete. One of the last remaining things we have to do is put stronger lights in Pine Grove Park, they were inadvertently underspecified, so we're waiting on the, the stronger lights that we like, that softball field to come in, those will be put in. Old Dalton High is coming down. I don't know if you've seen it.
Yeah, well, by the way today...
It's out there, it's...
The bricks are falling.
...being turned down. The environmental remediation was completed last week, and they immediately started on the demolition. Expect the demolition to be done here in a couple of weeks. Our Green Committee, Subcommittee of the Green Committee's been working on a revision to the recycling regulations, which we already have for our private haulers. All of you who use the transfer station know that we separate our trash there, and, but it's not being done. There was a very good article in Eagle today about difficulties with separating trash and encouraging recycling. They've done that, they've reviewed it and made some suggestions for both the, we have a bylaw, and we also have Board of Health regulations. Their suggestions were presented to the Board of Health. There's a very, they did a very nice PowerPoint presentation, if you'd like to see it sometime. I forward their suggestions on to Town Council for review, because it will come back as a warrant article to the town meeting perhaps, and then to the Board of Health to act on. And that's it.
Good for you. All right, items for future agendas. I'm not going to take the Facebook one off yet, because we're still working on it. And any changes either with what's on there or with the timing that I have placed on these things to get something going? Anybody?
On the short-term rentals that you have, that I have listed by, is listed by my name.
Yeah.
As you probably know, there's been some legislation out of Boston that is, and actually, there's some people object, there's some lawsuits potential, so it's not going to get straightened out by the state until probably the summer. So I would think that we don't want to, the Planning Board doesn't really want to come up with regulations until they completely finish and everyone agrees with what the state minimum requirements are.
So we'll be waiting for the Planning Board to act?
Yes. Yes. And so, in other words, I won't be giving a report in the spring.
Okay.
Maybe in the summer. How's that?
Okay. Anything else?
No.
For future agendas, Senator? Yeah, one thing. I'd just hear, and I don't want you to drag Chief Coe down here just for this, so he can send us a letter. I'd like to see an update on what we're doing with the junk car list. If I remember correctly, there was approximately 75 cars in that list. Of course, two of them were major contributors to the problem. And one of them we're dealing with, we've granted an extension. The other one, I don't think we've heard anything from. But I'm asking that, an update on all 75 of them. Have they gone away? Have any of them gone away? The status.
Okay. Anything else?
Should we get to burden right away on that?
Can you repeat that, please?
Well, to burden right away on the, on the APR property.
Thank you.
Do we want to call it a right-of-way?
Or to use it right-of-way?
Access.
Access to the right-of-way, yes.
Access to the field, maybe, or access to the field?
No, access through the right-of-way, yeah.
Well, access through the APR property.
Yeah, I don't like to use the word right-of-way. I don't think our intention is to let him have a right-of-way. Add to it if he doesn't already have it.
No, as long as he wants to, if he wants to.
Yeah, use it, yes.
Okay. Anything else? Okie doke. Remarks in the Select Board.
Yeah, I got one question.
Sure.
Right here on the agenda, under announcements, TV disposals, Lenox Valley WTF, whatever that means. They talk about blah, blah, this, and blah, blah, that. There's a lot of places that are taking televisions and appliances for a fee. So why are we advertising for Lenox Valley WTF?
I honestly don't know of any other places.
Goodwill ran Tyler Street.
They're not taking them anymore.
Oh, I know they weren't taking them anymore.
Goodwill's not taking them. There was another place that not taking them. And in fact, the only one I know of, only because I've participated in it, because my wife's an employee there, is Guardian would do it for their employees. But this is, every once in a while, and I think Pittsfield did it and included us, didn't they, in a hazardous waste?
Hazardous waste day. But today include the prices?
But is it this enough hazardous waste? Hazardous wastes and TV monitors and...
I don't know what you're... Usually when they're talking about hazardous waste day, they mean paint and liquids and things of that nature.
Well, they, it was, we were actually included on this flyer, if I remember the flyer. It said, specifically said Dalton.
Dalton, yeah.
So it's more or less an invitation by them for us...
To utilize your facility.
Yeah, waste treatment, so that's WTF, I believe it's a non-process association.
I don't know. I think it's a for-profit organization.
Well, I'm going to read it anyways.
Yeah, of course. I just wonder what you were doing to these 20% of other people.
Just to let people know, because they're always trying to get rid of TVs. I'm still trying to get rid of TVs. I'll never get rid of them.
I just remind the folks.
You didn't catch that, did you? Oh, God. Anything else, Ken?
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going to be going to the annual meeting this weekend down in Boston for the Select Board.
You going Friday?
Yeah, I believe in actually Thursday, I believe.
Does he, they have a special thing for new attendees?
Yeah, well, I went once before, so...
Oh, okay.
Also, can I have a question for you about the old Dalton High? I understand when they're pumping water out, the groundwater is still coming up. Is that true?
I have not heard that. What they did have to do, though, was they had to mix equal parts of the water being pumped out with water from the hydrant. And it was water leaking out of the hydrant, and they opened the hydrant continually. So I had not heard a report that there was any...
Yeah, did you check those logistics? I'm wondering if we're going to have like an artisan wall there once we get...
Yeah.
We'll fill it in. Let's refer to it as a geothermal.
See a warmer heating out of it.
See a hot, maybe we have a hot spring.
A hot spring.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have a hot, hot topic there anyways. Okay. Well, thank you all. I hope you had a great holiday season, and I hope we come to some type of conclusion with the, with the building project. I know it's a lot to consider, but do your own, do your own research on it, and that's all that can be expected, because there are a lot of things to consider. But thanks for letting me explain it as much as I did.
Thank you for all your time.
Yeah. Okay, announcements. TV disposal options. Lenox Valley Waste Treatment Facility, 6468 Willow Creek Road, Lenox, Mass., 413-637-1101, or www.lennoxvalleywtf.com. Deliver the TV to the Lenox facility. This is to get rid of your TVs. It's open Monday through Friday, Saturday mornings. Call ahead to confirm prices, up to 24 inches, $25, 25 to 40 inch, $35, 42 to 65, $40. The Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban, which went into effect on November 15, 2018, and will be in effect until April 15, 2019. I hold office hours by appointment, and beginning on the 24th of January, at the Senior Center, and then every fourth Thursday after that, from 4:30 PM until 6:00 PM, I will hold office hours. For further information, please call 413-684-6111, extension 11, or my home phone number of 413-684-2526. Representative, State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street, McCallahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Hall, and 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The Green Dalton Committee is looking for new members. If interested, contact the Town Manager's Office at 684-6111, extension 11. I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
I move we go in executive session and not be kept open session to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with union or non-union personnel in litigation. I consider the purchase exchange of lease or real estate, and also to investigate charges of criminal misconduct, or to consider the filing of criminal complaints and not return to open session.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, and seconded, roll call vote. Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
We'll be in recess for a few minutes.